Less than that.
Oh, only six.
We call the meeting to order law stand and Ricky Pastor will lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on is the approval of the agenda.
I just had a couple of things, I'm sorry.
No, no, you start.
You go ahead. Uh, let's see. The recording of minutes was one that I requested. I just want to make sure if we bring that up, we're allowed to make it an ordinance or resolution if we see fit. I don't know if that word needs to be on there or not. I know we ran into that last month. But I asked for that and then I asked for, I guess it would be under old business as well, is ordinance related to financial statements and bank statements.
Just thinking about it, just for clarity, your, all that one, what were you asking?
Uh, the email.
Because issue comes giving notice, um, I've actually issued a day of giving notice for the agenda, I don't actually take action on it.
Let's see, yeah, I asked for, uh, let's see. We created a resolution for the recording of meetings. I'm asking that to be changed to an ordinance.
I don't think there's an issue with that discussion, should you give a notice on that?
Okay. And then the other one is an ordinance for financial statements and bank statements to be presented to the council before each year.
Your calls is that all the agenda that's advertised, that becomes the issue.
So even though I requested it at the same time as the other ones, I requested, I've requested both of them at the same time, so.
I can address that, I can't address that. All I'm trying to do is make sure notice wise, we've given notice as to what's on the agenda.
So what am I allowed to do there then?
But what do they approve the agenda? If we can't change anything on the agenda, what do they approve it?
Well, again, you're, you're getting notice of the agenda originally. If somebody wants to remove something, it can be removed. The issue is, uh, when you advertise it, the public comes in and they expect you to either address it, if it's on there, or have notice of any pants. If it's not on the agenda, you can't address it. Not at least, not at least voting on it, because you have an opportunity, uh, the public has an opportunity to know what's on the agenda.
Okay. Then I will just say not an ordinance and just a discussion about financial statements.
Is that fine?
Yeah, we can.
And then I would just like to add, um, can we talk about the audit? We're still waiting on.
I don't have any information to give.
We're not done.
Question is, why?
Good question.
Good question.
They've been here and gotten all the information.
So is that getting added or not?
Can we put it on there to talk about it at least?
There's no information to give, but we could put it on for next month. There's no, she's not giving any information.
Again, that's left up to the mayor.
Yeah. If we had time permits, we will.
Okay.
I'll bring up the finance.
Okay.
That can do that.
Then I'll do that.
Can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to have, it'd be under old business, but an update on the fire hall situation and an update on the parks situation as well.
We'll do that. Let's do that under public safety.
Okay.
And then under parks and recreation.
My last item was email that I sent as well, and I know the best off of what Mr. Vanderbord just said, uh, I guess you can say a charter discussion.
That's like a clear, bad, interesting.
Under old or new?
I believe it would be new. I don't think I've ever brought it up before, sure.
Now, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes.
All those in favor, aye? Pox? Next item is for public comment. Uh, I don't know if anybody signed up for public comment.
Vince?
Vince.
Public comment, Mr. Vince?
In trade. I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to, uh, comment, I had one good half a day riding around with Chad uh, last week and really got an education on our whole sewer system. And, um, I haven't dug into a lot of the flowback system yet, but some of my preliminary observations were very good. And Chad really gave me an education of how well that system is working for him on the pots that he does have on reporting right now. So, um, a couple of things that I really got out of that day is one of them, we, it appears that we have the money in the system already. We need to put them pots in and get them pots updated that we have. We, we bought them for a reason. They need to be replaced. Let's get them in and get the system working right. Secondly, I really would, would recommend that we look at this Max Fl- I can't remember the name of the thing, can't, it's flowback, that we need to upgrade our system and maybe get on some kind of a long-term plan to get more of our pots on the system. Because Todd showed me a couple of, couple of issues that popped up that could have been a long-term disaster that could have taken him weeks to figure it out. And he figured it out in the morning because of some of the things that that system was saying. So some of the preliminary observations I made, uh, have been very good with that system. And I have a lot of roots, uh, with people in Florida, and I'm going to dig a little bit deeper, uh, to systems in Florida, because there's a lot of these systems in Florida that I have worked. So, they, they seem to be working and, uh, you know, some of them were kind of in sad shape and they got, they were brought up to order. And this system has helped to do that. So, um, that's what I want to say basically. Thank you for the educational with Chad. Um, I, I'm still going to dig into a lot more of this, because I, I think we made a good move as a city when we got into that system. Because I think we're already reaping some of the benefits of it pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
I'm Trey Stroud, this is my wife Brenda. We live at 768 Haffner Road here in Charlottesville in Kona Heights. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware that that was the one to speak list. I thought that was the just who's here list. However, after speaking with Councilwoman Miller, it might be more appropriate if my comments come, we can discuss the food truck issue. If you do.
I mean, you can go ahead and address it now.
I'm, I'm actually not sure what the issue's about.
Okay.
I saw the words food truck, that applies to me, and so I'm not exactly sure. Uh, I, Councilwoman Miller did mention to me that I believe someone is petitioning for the rates to go down. Is, is that correct? If that's correct, then I can make my comments now.
Yeah.
About four years ago, I came before this council, I believe Kirk Vanderbord and Jennifer and Councilwoman Miller were the only people that were here at that time. The rate at that time for food trucks in, in Charlotte was $60 for six months. Uh, the proposal was that the rate be raised to $100 a day for food trucks. That may come as a shock to some folks. I thought that was completely outrageous. Uh, my argument at that point was, why should it be done? When you can go to Dixon for $250 a year, you can go to Waverly for 200, you can go to, to McEwen for 250, you can go to Franklin for 150, Clarksville 55. Why would someone come to Charlotte and set up their food truck for $600 a year? Which is, which is what it, it ended up being. I think the vote was to, to, to make it $50 a month. My comment at that point was that you will not have food trucks come at that rate. And I think that's been proven. Uh, I, I know that Mike from Gee Daddies came for a while, he's out of business. I know that Fred from This Turkey Here came, but he won't come back when he can pay $250 to Dixon. I think Chick Flay came, I've talked to them, they're not coming back. Uh, Ots was here for a while, they're selling their food truck. Now, I know that that dang food truck is here now. Uh, it's, it's a simple matter of economics. They're new. They will figure out shortly that they can stay in Dixon for $250 a year and make more money than coming here at $600 a year. If you want food trucks, if you don't want food trucks here, then I just say ban them. If you want them here, you have to make it more attractive for them to come, not less attractive. So, it, it, $600 a year just does not match up with, with what goes on or in other surrounding communities. Food trucks bring commerce to an area. That, that's always been my argument. They bring commerce. Why, why does, why does CBs, unless they're just out of the goodness of their heart, why do CBs allow them to set up in their parking lot? It's, it's, as I say, it's a matter of economics. When, when someone goes and orders their Frappuccino or whatever it is that they order, and they're waiting for it, they say, wow, you know what? I need milk, I need bread, I need eggs, I need things that I don't have, let me just go, let me go on in and get that. Those people had no intention, maybe, of, of stopping at CBs for those products. But since they're in the parking lot, by virtue of that food truck being there, that is revenue for that business that they paid $0 to market for. So if you want food trucks, and I believe food trucks play a, a very valuable role uh, in, in the generation of commerce, then you need to lower those rates, or you're not going to have food trucks come. Thank you.
Thank you. I think those were the only two. Move on to the next item, it's the consideration of the regular council minutes from January 28th.
In the first paragraph, Jennifer, you've got, second line, you've got me being at the meeting two times. I was here twice. Melinda Miller, Crystal Oats, Leah Green, Melinda Miller, Stevie Smith, and Ricky Pastor.
Oh, up at the top?
Yes, just take one of me off.
We'll do it.
And then on, you've got the third one, Crystal Oats, motion, motion to approve the agenda, that was Ricky. And I seconded. On the third one, uh, to approve the agenda.
I have wrote down Chris and you seconded.
I wrote down Ricky.
Did y'all speak at the same time, maybe?
See, I seconded.
Yeah, I've got you down as seconded.
Yeah, but I had Ricky, Ricky did it, not Chris, but.
It don't matter.
I had Chris down there, but I didn't, I thought he said it at the same time.
And then, let's see, under Ricky Pastor's motion to approve November 26th council meetings, you've got me seconding, that was Leah seconded. I bet you didn't do it.
Yep, I've got you wrote down, so.
Yeah, that was Leah. Let's see, all the corrections I saw.
Can you have a motion to approve the minutes on these corrections? Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pox? Next item is consideration of the regular wastewater minutes from February the 11th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Leah seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pox? Next item is old business. First item under that is property code violations.
Mr. Mayor, council, on the property number five, the standard of the court is stated back in, uh, January, uh, we record where the fourth court held in civil contempt and reserved all additional fines and, uh, contention on his keeping property clean. So, I can't speak to what the current status is, um, but that's, that was finding in the court, the court said it's not kept clean, and I, the town can just file, file a motion to get back in the court to enforce all the fines and penalties additionally the court wants to avoid. So he's under, under an order of civil contempt to keep his property clean. You all, you all wanted to move forward on 3373, Highway 48 North, that's the, the storage, uh, property. And we, we, he has been served, as Michael Estes has been served, and that matter is set for March of the 10th. Two other properties, the 205 Old Columbia Road property, we basically passed that, we were looking to see if there were vehicles that remain still an issue. I'm not sure if it is or not, I don't know if I can speak to that.
Still a lot of vehicles there. I thought I sent that over.
Okay. So, that, that continues to exist, continues to be an issue. If you all want me to proceed with that, to, to file or send over a letter, we can do that. The other property is 148 Glen Lane, and that was the one we had sent a letter on, trash cans, trash cans not being properly kept.
148?
148 Glen Lane.
We got, and a minute, it's 6377.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's 148.
148, yeah.
148 Glen Lane. So, I don't have, sending this trash can.
144.
Yeah, the property kept, no issues anymore. James, do you know, do you know about that property?
It was cleared the last time we were out there.
Yeah.
So I guess the question becomes, what do you all want to do to my old Columbia Road? Do you think you send another letter or?
I'll send the letter.
We've sent one letter, right?
Yes, we've been, no, no, excuse me, October, and the, I've sent it both US Mail and Certified. Certified came back as unserved on November the 8th, but the, the regular US Mail was served. Obviously, it didn't come back.
What exactly is the violation?
So you're not, you're not to keep, as I understand it, you're not to keep, um, vehicles in the upper, upper vehicles on your property. There's a memo on that, it's due to, to reap, um, it's all, it's, I care, I all got to have tags.
Yeah.
I save it in accounting.
How many vehicles are on the property right now? Chad?
Half dozen.
Yeah, at least.
At least.
Bunch of mowers, a backhoe, I'm not sure what all's up there right now.
We've always had trouble up there, haven't we, with this address?
I've had a problem running a business out there before.
Yeah.
How would I say, send another letter? The first letter come from the city or from Mr. Vanderbord?
From, from us.
It can't, it can't.
From us. Well, we can file suit, but I, I would recommend, let's send another letter and just read it within the morning.
Okay. I agree, send another letter.
I'll try to get some pictures to Chad, some pictures to make a part of the letter, make a three or four to one issue. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. Next item under the old business is the M-TAS rate study for the sewer rates. If I recall, from last meeting, we put this off discussing this until we were more, had more knowledge about the cost of the expansion of the drip fields and things like that. Um, that, that's not going to be able to happen until we, number one, can get up there and get them cleared, and then get the PERC test run, so, uh, and, and then we may, we may be more, we may have more knowledge of how much that's going to cost. So, that's, that's, that's where we are, waiting for the weather. This probably would have been a pretty good week to have got, got that done, which you never know. I don't know what next week looks like, but, um.
We can't get an estimation until the land gets cleared, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, until we get the land cleaned off and get the PERC test done.
So we don't?
The PERC, the PERC test, I guess is going to determine how much of the land we can Whether we'll be able to use, was it five acres? Whether we'll be able to use all five acres or not.
So we, we just keep, no pun intended, but we keep getting stuck in the mud.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, I think Strand was here in September, October.
They should do the PERC test before you clear.
Well, we've got to not clear it, but clean it up, the underbrush. But I, that's, is that what's that, is that know what the state told us?
Yeah, they usually can, you can underbrush for kicking that soil.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We're, we're five or six months in to knowing that we needed to address the system, quite frankly, and now we're saying we're going to wait a whole nother month to bid out these costs and everything. So, I mean, this is the exact situation that I've brought up multiple times, of like, if we're, if we're going to keep it, we need to take care of it, and it keeps getting delayed. I don't, I don't understand that. If it's, if it's a situation in which the city truly wants to take care of it, I, I don't, I, why aren't we?
Yeah. Well, we can address that when we get down to the new business, because it was brought to our attention when the auditors were here. Something that, uh, we couldn't do the process that we had done in order to get that started. We missed a step. I missed a step. But anyway, I guess the reason I, I bring this or mention this is, you know, knowing that it's taking this long, you know, uh, I'm, I'm still not convinced that we don't need to move forward and, and try to come up with what we're going to do with the rates, even before we get all of that, because regardless, uh, we're going to have to increase the rates.
How do we know that, sir? Because.
Well, just based on.
According to the financial statement we got, we're doing just fine.
Well, I'm just basing it on M-TAS's, uh, future study that they, they gave us. That's what I'm basing it on.
I, I agree with that, but, uh.
But we can leave it alone for right now.
I don't know how we're going to be able to make a, a judgment on raising them or not raising them without knowing how much money we need.
Okay.
I mean, how else do we, I mean, is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm just.
If our financial statements keep looking green, I mean, I don't understand where the negative, the, the, the negative dollars are coming from, from that rate study if we're doing this well. I, I just, I don't know. Something, something isn't adding up.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's a fair, yeah, absolutely a fair statement, so. But I was just basing mine on what, what M-TAS had sent after they had done the rate study and what they projected us to do each year for the next five years.
I think the M-TAS rate study said we'd be negative, is it this year or is it next year?
I think next year.
Next year. So.
Okay. We just move on, move on to the next item?
No, let me ask Chad, when do you think you're going to get on the fields?
I'm trying next week. I know they're calling for an inch of rank. I was also curious, I was going to bring it up in a little while, the new thing they brought up in the audit, the $1,000 deal, do we need to go back and bid that equipment? Because it's over $1,000.
I thought we were going to prove it.
We already proved that. You were here last month, we did all that.
Yeah, I missed that.
Chad's doing the clear.
Mm-hmm.
The equipments aren't whole, you've got it secured.
Yeah, it's secured, it's just whenever we get a good week to do it.
Does that have nothing to do with the?
I mean, they're cattle and cheese, right?
Correct. It's just a muddy, muddy area, you don't want to disturb the dirt.
Okay, so what's that got to do with the auditor?
Over $1,000.
Anything over $1,000.
Whether it's equipment or labor or anything.
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 Anything. It's got to be advertised, uh, and then bid submitted.
Well, and how long have we known about that? Because I think we got a email about it. So, again, and I hate to keep bringing it up, but, you know, Mr. Mayor, you and I went back and forth early February about, we got contractors saying they're ready to work right now and.
Right. The auditor, the auditor brought it out, when was she here?
Uh, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
We couldn't, we don't think we could have gotten it ready before this meeting?
Uh, I mean, we've got, it's advertised. Now done, it's done the correct way. And now we just have to wait back for the redid.
Is the 10, is the 10-day rule, what's that rule? And it's not in the charter, the 10 days for a bid?
It just says advertisement, so I don't know if.
Your advertisement for anything over $1,000 is on your charter.
Right.
So if you're wanting to change that, you're going to change the charter.
I'm talking about the 10-day, the 10-day.
I'm not sure.
The 10-day notice and we can't do a meeting without a 10-day notice? We can't do a bid without a 10-day notice?
We're combining a lot of different things there.
Well, the fact, the point is, I just don't see it in the charter, so is there a state?
There's an adequate notice and if, whatever the, I, I don't recall, I have in front of me what charter requires for you to advertise, I get started saying you're, it's interpreted as 10 days.
Yeah, is that, is that?
I thought that, I thought, no, I thought that was M-TAS.
It may.
I thought that was their, their route.
It may be.
But.
So when did we, so if we, if we posted this Friday for the pots, is that right?
No, Chad brought me the information yesterday.
So it was posted.
At 3:30. Or right at 3:00. Because he changed the specifications for the bids. So the old bids no longer work.
So, why would we not want to have a special call meeting? And if, if the rule is 10 days, again, I looked and looked and looked, I did not see any rule. I saw adequate time is what I saw, which could be interpreted.
And that's in the charter. That's in the charter.
Right. So that could be.
But I, you know, I could be wrong. But I, you know, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that Gary from M-TAS told me that meetings and all that, you, you had to give a ten day public notice.
I think there's a rule, a lot of jurisdictions have different rules, if you will. Case law doesn't define adequate notice, Sharon doesn't, because it depends on the sort of teams, right? So, some, some say ten days, some say fourteen days, so I think it sounds like we need to put in a story of ten days.
But if we did seven days, we're not breaking any law.
We're getting into that area of talking, you know, someone I follow like Wallace who's saying, you know, I didn't get adequate notice of this, so I, you know, you get into that scenario, so it's adequate notice.
So, why, why would we, why won't we just have a, if this is a big deal, which I think it's a big deal, why don't we in ten days have a special call meeting?
It has to be advertised.
You said it was advertised today.
No, I sent it to be advertised today.
Okay, so when will it be advertised?
When she emailed me back and told me which paper she will get in.
Ten days from that day, why don't we have a special call meeting to get it done? I feel like this is a big deal, I feel like we've been talking about it for six months.
You have to have a turn in date for the bids.
I don't know what that has to do with anything.
A turn in date for the bids or has to be a time, a timeline?
What she's saying is, so the advertisement, the advertisement is for your bid, and if the bid was advertised, let's say it was advertised March one, and you submit your bids by the tenth day, so March ten, so you're not going to get your bids until March ten, uh, and then that's when you could, it can be considered, okay, you all could have a special call meeting if you advertise it for them. So, that's what she's saying, is it's a scenario where you're not going to actually get the bids in until you designate, you have to have your bids in by X date.
And what's that?
We specified it for, I think, the twentieth at two o'clock, which is a Thursday.
Is that a technical service? The, uh, for the pots, it's considered a technical service, right?
It's, it's a ser- it's, it has to be advertised and bid.
It's not a professional service.
All services do, right?
It's not a professional service, so it would give you the...
Doesn't seem like we're doing a very good job of making this a priority. Uh, that, that's exactly the concern that I brought up every single time we talk about this. All I've asked is for us to make it a priority, and we keep finding reasons to push it off, and I, I haven't heard a good explanation why yet. It's very, it's very disappointing.
Anything else, we'll move on. The next item under old business is the Lions Club building. I thought we were supposed to, I thought someone was going to report tonight, uh, that, that we had looked into to see about some issues that need to be addressed. One of the issues, and Kurt here can follow up with me, is that the building and the property actually belong to the city. So, the city is basically responsible for, uh, some of the upkeep. Now, we know that the Lions Club has approached, I thought, I thought maybe Mr. Light was going to be here and, and deliver what the Lions Club intends on doing with their part of the money. But regardless of the fact, um, after inspecting it, um, the Lions Club is in violation of electric, electricity. And so, I mean, that's, I don't know if that's something that we want to address because we own the building. I think that, uh, I think that the Lions Club has actually gotten bids on what it would cost to repair or replace the old screw-in fuse type switch box inside to a breaker panel.
Do we know how much?
I, I want to say the bid was eight thousand dollars.
Seven. Those one, seven, eight, them more than one.
How much that?
Three, seven, eight, somewhere along with that, we had two, three bids.
Okay. Uh, I just, I didn't, I didn't send out, I just went and looked myself. And being a former electric department employee, I know that, and I hesitate to say this, but, uh, we could get into some serious fines if someone, state fire marshal or state electrical inspector was happening, go in and see that.
So, when...
Well, this is, sorry, on that condition, then no one should be in that building.
Not necessarily.
If it's a fire hazard, if it's a danger, we have a liability, no one should be in that building. I'm, look, Mr. Van Forte, am I not correct? We don't want to get sued.
So, yeah, I don't know who is inspected to tell us that.
No, nobody, nobody.
And maybe we need to get somebody to go.
Except me, and I...
Maybe we need somebody to go and see what the liability is for the city, because, I mean, I don't want somebody to get hurt and...
Well, the last thing we asked for, the last time we talked about this, was clarification of how the lease worked, because there was a clause in there about the Lions Club having liability.
So, when we looked at that, the, there's statutory authority under TCA twelve, two, three, oh, two, that says basically that towns, municipalities can lease to nonprofits, which I'm understanding that's what you all are, uh, for a period of no more than fifty years. Well, their lease predates the statute. So, you get into, well, how is that going to get interpreted, that issue, if you're trying to break it before the court? The court would have to make a determination, okay? Their lease predates the statute. As far as who's responsible, there's language in there that says that they would be responsible for, uh, the maintenance and upkeep, but ultimately, the town is the owner of the property. So, uh, as the mayor said, I was thinking, if you recall, my suggestion, and you all thought took that up, was to get an architect, a lead architect to look at it, I, we thought, the mayor and I thought that that was going to bring forward some proposals as to how to ensure that the property is up to code, because it's an older bid building, and we would have that information coupled with this issue of the lease, and to sit down and talk with, uh, the Lions Club to say, here's what we're looking at, here's what is needed, here's the condition of, of the building, here's the condition of your lease, what can we come together and resolve? Well, we don't have the sign of it that here's what needs to be done to the property to bring it up to code. So, with that, maybe we just have a missing piece. I don't, I don't have a report in front of me from someone that says that it's a fire hazard, and I think that's overstepping to say it when we don't have that. There are buildings that have older, uh, wiring that are firmly occupied. I don't know what that creates, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, if somebody tells me that, that's a different story that has the appropriate, uh, the appropriate letter behind their name to, to, to make that determination. So, to answer your question, Mr. Loach, um, it is, it is more complicated than just saying that it's a valid lease or it's an invalid lease, okay? But there's statutory authority here that says you can't lease for any longer, ship a lease for any longer than fifty years. I understand that was a ninety-nine year lease, and I think there may be some time under that lease supposedly left on it, I guess, that they would argue. But as I understand there, they understand that they're in a crux, they may not want to continue in the building, I don't know. That was part of the discussion we were going to have, but we need the information from the architect. Hope that answers some of your questions.
Absolutely. Would it be, I mean, to make it more black and white, it sounds to be more beneficial, can the lease be terminated by both parties?
It can, of course, it absolutely could, if, if that's what both parties want in.
I mean, I can't, I mean, obviously, I don't know if that's what they want, but that would, it's muddy at best right now. Or, I mean, if they wanted to talk about purchasing the land and the building, I don't know, like, I think it needs to get a little bit more black and white before we can really decide to do anything.
That's why I said, uh, that's why you need that information to know, okay, what's the minimum that has to be done, right, to bring it where, you know, where it's, everything is up to code. You just, you don't have that right now.
And I thought, I thought that was supposed to be presented tonight.
And I thought the right guy...
Yeah, Josh.
Was supposed to go over there.
Yeah, and he did, and he did. And he was, I don't know, he was supposed to have gotten with Jason Pilkington, and then he was, was supposed to, on February meeting, present, present it to us tonight, but I don't know. I don't know what...
Well, can you, I mean, I don't know how this works, but can you discuss with them if they would be open to ending the lease or if they'd be open to purchasing the property, because I don't, I don't, can't figure out whose liability. Obviously, there's a lot of pre-answers, so I don't, um, I mean, would they be open to, I don't see, we wouldn't give them a new lease or whatever that new, whatever it would be, but...
That's true, I mean, that, that's, that can be discussed.
Have that discussion with them and...
Yeah.
To be clear, you would have to, it would have to be declared surplus property.
Yeah.
To sell them.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
Just to be clear.
But if we're responsible for that electrical, but why aren't we, how much would it cost the electrician to come in and look at it and bid it?
I mean, if you're coming in just to look at it, you'd be bidding for nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, there's several licensed electricians in Charlotte that would do it.
They've already done that.
I got to say something, man. We've been in that building, that building was built in fifty-eight, I believe. We've been there all this time, and that wiring has been that way all that time. When the fire hall was built, they pulled that electrician there and put it in there where it is in the kitchen with everything else, okay? It's been that way all that time. It's a little bit, to me, that all of a sudden, we're going to do a, a Lions Club building, well, that's been y'all's building. Y'all owned that building, we've been taking care of it all those years. We used to have to mow it, used to take turns mowing down there. We, we painted it, we were fixing up the inside of it, we've been taking care of it, and the city has it done a whole lot. Just kind of, that's the building down there, that could have been fixed a long time ago, okay? We do have a bid of seven thousand dollars from Raleigh Burgess, said he would come in, a licensed electrician, everybody knows it, he would come in for seven thousand dollars and fix that, so that's where we are. We appreciate what's going on, but all of a sudden, you're excited about it, why weren't you excited about it some other time?
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
We would need to place it out for bid.
Yeah, we, we would have to, you know.
I, I still think we got to figure out the legal stuff before we do anything.
Listen, Loach, I, I guess to address it directly, it's the town's property.
Right.
It's the town's property, so, um... You, I mean, I can, yes, you're going to have liability, I mean, ultimately, you would have liability, uh, depending on what we're talking about, but you're asking them to tell you directly and open public when there's possible litigation that's involved? Yes, you're going to have liability, I mean, I don't...
Yeah, I'm not asking for answers from you, I'm more asking for a discussion.
If they need a place to stay, why don't they just meet here? If that one's unsafe, why can't they just meet here?
I think that's, I think that was addressed once before, maybe back when y'all were communities.
Well, I mean, we talked about it some, but it wasn't...
It never was.
No, it never was a, really a discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, that's when we decided we was going to build a community center.
Yeah.
And, uh, we had a special spot in there for them to meet, but, I mean, we spent eighty-three thousand dollars on that for nothing. I mean, we could have built a whole new building for, for eighty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that was a waste.
We were presented a... How much was it, two million or three million?
Almost, almost two million.
That's the plan that was presented to us, that's why I was saying more.
Yeah.
Well, if you listen to the architects, it's always going to cost a lot.
I would, I would just recommend maybe having that discussion with Mr. Light, I think, I mean...
Okay.
As far as the lease.
Sure.
Yeah, would, do we need to make a motion to send it out for bid on Monday or May?
Uh, yeah.
They, they'll go in there and give a bid for nothing.
Yeah.
Any of them will.
I make a motion, that's a, that's a, that's a paper.
I mean, we don't have to do the work if they're, I mean, just getting bids and getting...
So, make a motion to put the electrical up to code out for bid?
Yes.
All those in favor, yeah?
Uh-huh.
Pose. Okay, next item is, uh, recording of minutes, which is something that we have done previously. Did we purchase the equipment to do the video and audio of the meetings?
Yes.
And was there an issue with them?
Everything works.
Okay.
We had an issue with, I think, uploading or trying to get something set up with YouTube for a while through Charlie. Um, I don't know if that's been completed.
But that's for the audio, what about the video equipment?
I think it was both.
That was both of them, I thought.
It was all in one deal.
The only reason that I brought this up to be an agenda item is because I would like to make it, it an ordinance. I'm told we can't do that tonight, which is fine, but I, I would like for that to be made an ordinance.
It's a resolution, we made a resolution for that to be uploaded in so many days, and it's not being done. So, what do we need to do? I mean, do we have to put it on the next meeting to make it an ordinance? Do we write up an ordinance and give it to you? I mean, what do we need to do here?
Is that a two reading?
Yeah, two, for two readings, if you want to.
But, yeah, I mean, it can be approved as an ordinance tonight, and then...
I was just going to, it couldn't be?
Couldn't, can't, or got to wait?
No, it's going to take two readings.
Okay, so...
You got it on the agenda, so yes, it can be considered an ordinance, yes.
Yes.
You got this on the agenda, it is on the agenda.
I'm confused, we've already voted on this and said, let's get it in, why isn't it in?
It's a resolution, it's not an ordinance.
So, our vote didn't count when we voted it in last?
Resolution seems to be a suggestion here in the ordinance as law, so...
Oh.
That's kind of like the charter. You know, ordinance does affect the charter, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, is there someone that we need to get to operate this equipment during the...
I had it set up and running, recording, uh, I believe I could do it. It's a pretty simple plug and play deal.
If you just want to do it, save her from having to upload it to the YouTube channel where it's already on there, I mean...
And it, yeah, I'm, I'm not techni- I'm not technical at all, so then, okay, how do we go through the process of uploading it onto YouTube?
Something I'd get Charlie to walk me through.
You, you know...
The county does, the county does it live, and the school board does it live.
Charlie does it.
They stream it, they stream it live?
They stream it live, and then when it's done, it's...
It's there.
Yeah. That would be the easiest, I don't know what it costs, I don't know, I ain't, I'm not the tech guy either.
Well... So, uh, maybe that's something I need to talk to county mayor about, ask him, or whoever does it for the county.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Charlie?
He already knows how to do it.
You need Charlie to come to the next week. Sure, city, citywide board, okay, that as well, so there's, we get a larger authority, they do theirs.
Who does? You don't know who, who does Light Bluffs or the... I guess we find out.
I can make a motion to make this an ordinance tonight, because I would like to, and then we'll read it again tomorrow, next week, okay?
Yes.
So, I, I would like to make a motion for an ordinance. The, uh, recording of meetings, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember how the resolution, I believe it was ten days? Posted ten days, at least ten days from the meeting.
Is it video or just record?
I'd like video and recording.
Yeah, I think, I think it may, it may... Yeah, I think, I think it may, it needs, it needs to be both, video and audio. But that wouldn't need a, a ten day.
If we do it right, no sorry, it would happen immediately.
Yeah.
Oh, right?
Well, I think what he's saying is just, it would, just so long.
I'm trying to get some leeway.
Oh, okay.
It's posted within.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I see, I see, I misunderstood what you were saying.
And I second the motion.
Okay, Ricky, second.
Can you re, can you restate that to make sure I have it correct?
Uh, a motion for an ordinance to post the recording of meetings within ten days. What did y'all say? Post the recording and video of meetings. Do you want it to still be ten days?
It'd be fine. Don't matter.
Either ten days or live stream.
Well, if you took live stream, which are you, which one?
I would do live stream, that's what I was.
Yeah.
So, motion to, motion for ordinance to post the recording meetings on live stream. That eliminates the need for ten day.
And you still second?
Oh, yeah, I still second.
Okay. Got it?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on now to new business. Um.
Aye, it's, you might do that new business, my apologies.
Oh. Which concerned the advertisement for the, uh, replacement of sewer pots. Uh, it was brought to our attention by the auditor. Uh, and this is, I, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm assuming, or I believe that we were told by NTS that advertisements had to be for at least ten days. I can double check that as well. But anyway, anything over a thousand dollars spent has to be advertised and then bids submitted.
So, Mr. Mayor, that just, again, for clarity, that is our charter, that is specifically in control.
Yeah, yeah, but, but not the, not the day. I think the day comes through the state, but I'll double check on that.
Yeah, I looked, I looked, Mr. Mayor, I, I didn't see it, and I didn't, I looked at this. I looked at the, uh, the, uh, Tennessee Comptroller's website, I didn't see.
You don't see anything there.
I don't see any specific days, I see adequate.
Adequate notice, but those are often times talking about two different things. Adequate notice for a meeting compared to one-time period for advertising a bid, so, probably a little bit, well, should be longer time.
But the thousand dollars is for not just sewer parts, it's for.
It's for anything, 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 which.
I just wanted that to be clear.
Which the auditor also recommended, recommended that that amount be increased. But to do that, we would have to change the charter for that, so. And we don't have to.
A thousand dollars ain't nothing now.
Yeah, well, it, well, so anyway, but I mean, I, I would prefer, instead of rushing into doing anything like that, that we discuss it later in, in another meeting.
One thing about that, Mr. Mayor, if, if it's, if it's something that is budgeted, if we have the dollars in the budget to do a specific item, they still say that we need a meeting to approve those dollars to be spent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, if you put, you tie us home to city trust, you'd have to get a bid out now. Cause it'd be over a thousand dollars probably.
Seven, seven forty-one. That's my point, like, we have money in the budget for routine maintenance and, and.
I think that's more to keep you from just going to the same places, letting people.
Trying to take care of certain people in the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, but any, anyway, the advertisements have been done, and like I said, we changed the bid. Uh, we're going to require, or we're asking the contractor to furnish the products, the pipe, everything, things that need, that they'll need to install the pots. So that might, and will increase their bids.
Like two of the bids we had already had, they did it two different ways. One was the city supplied everything, and one was they supplied everything.
Okay.
So they might change it a little bit, just the way the wording is.
Yeah, and I guess if, I, I think I can do this, but if you don't mind, if you'll reach out to those four and, and tell them that we've had to, uh, rebid with the job.
Yeah, we'll send it, send it over to them. Can we also ask for lead times? Or I didn't see any of the last bids provided, how quickly they can get on the actual job? Can, can they provide? Two, they said they could start pretty quick, but it kind of depends on, I guess, when it is approved. Right. How many jobs come in between then? Right, if they could just provide that.
Provide, yeah, provide a lead time as well.
Like a three or four, five month lead time?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions on, on that? Next item under new business, a food trucks. So what you thinking?
Well, to go back, I, I was dead set against any of the. I didn't vote for any of the new policies when they made them. And, uh, they wanted to bill a hundred dollars a day.
And they did temporarily.
And which.
Is ridiculous.
I told them that, just put in there, you don't want anybody there, cause the only ones that could afford it would be the big, like Chick-fil-A and them, cause they love it, I mean. And the argument I had back then is Sweet Charlotte, I mean, I do a lot of business with Sweet Charlotte, but they have a food truck sitting in the yard, in their, in their gardens and everything, they never done pay anything. But, but I don't think we should have anything, or, I think the sixty dollar fee a month or six months was good.
I don't see, so that's, in this ordinance that was provided to us, I don't see anything here that says it is a hundred dollars a day.
And that was what they were proposing when we first started, uh, talking about it. And then we ended up, what was it, two fifty's?
It was passed, yes.
It was passed, and then we changed it.
Is, is it this, is this the one? I don't see anything in here that says that.
No, there's no money in there, and it's signed, it's an ordinance, so.
So where's the, yeah, so what's the current, I guess, I mean, all that is shown on here is a permit fee, there's no daily anything.
There was, that, we never voted that in, it was gonna be voted in, and then we changed it to something else.
The hundred dollars, they changed it to fifty dollar application fee and fifty dollars a month.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think, unfortunately, um, when I look, I, I noticed, we, I didn't receive, or at least I didn't get a copy of it, maybe just might, it'll be downloaded. But eight oh, eight one oh four, locations, hours and operation, uh, should have been included. I don't know if you have eight one oh four, but it talks about frequency, food trucks may operate at fifty dollars per truck per month. So you may not even see, I don't know.
No, it's not in here.
Right, so that's, that's, that's where a proportion came from, uh, but it's section eight one oh four.
We don't have it, we don't have it.
So it just says, frequency, food trucks may operate at fifty dollars per truck per month, if only one truck per day allowed. And allocation on truck, they have a property, seven AM, if you can reach those days in operation, for which the, shall designate a.
So fifty dollars a day is the current?
Eight fifty dollars a month, fifty dollars a month, I would say a day, I'm just, fifty dollars a month.
And then come every day.
No, there was, there was some days stipulated in there, they could only come so many days a week.
I understand what the policy is, I'm.
I have to look back, I have it at home, but I don't know what it, who it actually says.
Per day allowed at a location or property, seven AM to eight PM, uh.
I was thinking they could only come like three times a week.
We've talked about that, but I don't think.
I think it passed.
I don't think it did.
Is there a reason why we don't have that page?
That's what I want to.
It may not have just scanned in, the printer may have ate it through.
It goes from eight one oh two to eight one oh five.
When I was scanning, it may have just pulled the two pages together. That's if you set up every month. You just pay fifty dollars a month, each month if you wanna set up.
Can someone just explain the cost one more time, I'm sorry? So the permit fee is one, one fifty, and that's a one-time-a-year fee?
I thought it was one hundred. Was it fifty?
I believe it says one, we have that page, I believe it says one fifty.
They changed it to fifty, I believe. A fifty dollar application fee.
What is the most recent ordinance that we're trying to, I mean, what are we at today? This doesn't tell us where we are.
It's, it's fifty dollars.
And now they're saying it's changed again, so I mean, I'm trying to.
It's fifty dollars.
Understand where we are right now, so we can decide whether we have to change it or not.
It's a fifty dollar, one-time fee for one year. You pay fifty dollars, then you pay fifty dollars a month, each month you come. Let's say you come in February, it's gonna be fifty dollars. You come in, if you don't come in March, you don't pay. If you come in April, it's fifty dollars.
For a permanent for thirty days.
Yeah. So if you wanted to come all year, it's gonna be six hundred dollars.
There's also.
Plus the fifty.
So seven hundred.
Well, on.
Six fifty.
On eight dash one oh six, it says there shall be an annual permit fee of a hundred and fifty dollars as well. Be paid upon approval of the application.
See, I have.
Application fees, I understand, I, I don't have.
I don't, I don't have it, I have it on my phone, but I don't clearly what it was. I remember we had about a three-month discussion on this.
Is the two fifty in Dixon including their permit fee, or is it?
Just does.
And includes the permit plus all year?
The two hundred and fifty dollars covers the entire year. That is the permit fee.
So if you show up in January, you can operate. If you don't wanna go until March, it's still two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's correct.
I won't be able to make a decision on this, Mr. Mayor, until I fully understand what our, what the date ordinance is.
Okay.
And that's just me speaking for me, so.
I know it's way too high. It's, if we don't want food trucks, you just say.
We just, that's, yeah, you're right, might as well just say we don't want food trucks.
I mean, the, the local people's who it affects, it doesn't affect the big ones. I mean, every time Chick-fil-A comes, they sell out. I mean, these guys are trying to make a living. I don't think it, I think one-time fees should be plenty a year.
I'd say two hundred a year, maybe, I mean, that's what, sixteen dollars a month, almost seventy-five.
You got one of these days, I mean, you gotta think about the businesses that are here too, I mean, off the food trucks.
Well, I mean, like Caleb says, his business goes up every time Chick-fil-A came, his business went up like sixty percent.
So many people come, and they can't get served, cause they're low on, they can't.
We all want our ice cream.
I, I don't think they hurting the business. If I, if I decide to stop at a food truck, I ain't planning on stopping anywhere else, I'm going to a food truck, I know that there.
Well, I'll tell them one fee. I think it needs to be reasonable.
Yeah, cause it's not reasonable, and when we, when they, you know, I voted against it, but when we voted on it, I voted no every time, but I didn't agree with it. I didn't think it, I thought it was way too high. I thought we should just say we didn't want them.
And if they're paying permits everywhere, that's gonna be added up cost.
We'll discuss this at our next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I will look and see what I, if I have them.
We get the la, the latest documentation?
Yeah, whatever the, the current.
Yeah.
So you'll put it on next month, September?
Yeah. And the last item. Is, uh, discussing charters.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I sent you an email on the twenty-first, I apologize, I apologize for the latest, but, uh, I've been doing some reading on some of the other city, local city charters. One thing that I, that I would like to address is, I know we've said this a million times in meetings, but it's very, our charter is a little bit outdated, to say the least. Something, I don't think it's been updated since nineteen ninety, I believe. You know, county ordinances and all that, but, um, I was reading some of the, uh, how the administrative duties of the mayor in the Dixon City Charter reads. It reads a little bit differently from a department head standpoint. It says, "The mayor with approval from the council shall appoint department heads and other major officers of the city whose appointments are not otherwise provided for in this charter and who would not be employees of boards or commissions. All department heads and other officers appointed by the mayor with approval of the council shall hold office in the ordinance with such personnel rules and regulations as the council may at that, adopt, sorry. However, the provisions of this section shall not abridge the right of the rest of us." I, I did do some digging into, and we were able to look at several of our old ordinances, and we haven't gotten through all of them yet, but we got through several of them, and I looked through some of our codes, and, I mean, there are several things that is in our codes that we're not doing right right now, just to be honest with you, so. I do think that while we can't talk about, we can't make any, uh, movements today, um, I think it's a good idea to put on the agenda maybe next month, or, or a working session, and then put it on the agenda of discussing the charter, and if there's any, to know that when you go present the charter for changes, it's good to go present them all. And, or whatever it is that passed, so. Uh, I think that would be a good, uh, topic for March. And, uh, I give a session.
How difficult is it to change a charter?
So a charter, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So a charter amendment requires a resolution being passed by this body, two thirds of this body. And I think ideally, I think most of the legislature may want you to get it in by December, so they can put it as part of their bills that they submit for consideration, uh, for January, February, that type of time period. Um, I've learned that there is a late bill committee that you can submit it in front of for consideration, which you see if you have a resolution that says, you know, code one, two, three, I want to change to, you know, from this language to this language, it's very clear, you submit that to your legislature, you represent it, who would be, uh, who's in care for here. And he then submits it to the legislature for consideration. Assuming it gets approved, it has to come back here, it has to be signed with the governor, come back here to be approved again. Cause they may get modified for whatever reason.
So you're saying you need a resolution to change the charter?
Need a resolution to submit to your legislature, who is gonna then submit it, because it has to be changed at the legislature.
Okay.
That's the list.
So let's say our charter right now is old, it's never been modified, you've got all these ordinances. Does that change, like, let's say the charter says, say you can't spend more than a thousand bucks, and we do an ordinance to change that. Which one rules?
Or the charter.
Okay. So all these ordinances really don't mean anything if it contradicts the charter?
It shouldn't.
Okay.
So is everybody, uh, can everybody, if we make a work session in March at five o'clock, can that? Everybody be here? That would be the twenty-fifth before the council meeting.
At five o'clock.
Yeah.
Are you like, are we doing that?
Yeah, if, if everybody, I don't know.
Can we put the walking track up, like, Jen referred to, Charlotte, walk for the walking track?
Yeah.
You know what I'm gonna ask? And it might be improper, Mr. Benford, but what? And it might be improper, Mr. Benjore, but what do we, what are some of the things we're doing wrong? What are we going against? What have we done wrong?
I would suggest that you, you look at your, I mean, I guess if Mr. Deluge has proposed charter changes, that you submit them, you know, for consideration, I think you take that up in discussion and a work session.
Okay. I'll, I'll accept that.
Anything else? We'll move on to the committee reports. First item is city attorney, Kurt, anything else to...
Mr. Mayor, I really believe anything else at this point, you all heard the, uh, the property's...
Finance?
I just wanted to know about our audit. Shouldn't have been done and turned in in September?
Oh, December.
December.
December, and now we're in February. What's, what's the holdup? Why is she not...
She's not giving me any information, they've moved on to another city and they're coming back.
That's recent, though, what, what, I mean, this has been going on, we heard that back in September, October.
Yeah, because my computer, remember, it was, the computer had issues, and I had to get the computer situated.
Okay, is this Sage?
This is, yeah, Sage, the ongoing issue was Sage.
So where are the other things?
So QuickBooks is not allowable for what we need, it does not support our retirement, so we're moving on to local government software, which is made for governments, because QuickBooks does not work for us, Sage does not work for us properly. So we have reached out to local government to get that software installed.
Okay, what's the cost of that?
Well, we have to update our property taxes, that goes out of date in June, and it's a different fees for the different items, but it's, I think it totals, what, about ten thousand dollars? But we have to do the, we have to do the, the property tax, because it goes out of date in June, and our taxes will come out in October. But we've reached out to them, yeah, for that.
It's going to cost ten thousand dollars for this new program?
Yeah, for the property taxes and the accounting.
I thought you said that the auditor was here in February?
Two weeks ago, oh yeah, two weeks ago.
About two weeks ago, week and a half.
So the auditor was here in February?
Uh-huh.
Two weeks ago.
Okay. I thought you just said you hadn't talked to them since...
Not since they came.
No, not since they came, they haven't...
So they came...
They reached out for some information from the fire department.
They haven't provided an update yet.
They reached out for some information about fire department, I reached out to Kenny, I reached out to the fire department for that information, submitted that information to them, and I've not heard back.
Because I tell you, we can't proceed forward until, right, on next year's budget.
I don't think you can, um... Which would be my next thing, is budget, which obviously we can't do anything, because we don't have any information. All right, what about financials, where do these financials come from?
They're in the Sage, yes.
They're in Sage, and you load our budget into Sage?
That's, that's the budget that was loaded by MG Group, loaded into Sage.
All right, because when I look at our financial statements, the year-to-date versus the year-to-date budget, there's huge differences in the budget not being enough big to be a prorated budget.
I'll look and see what Brittany did.
Brittany does this?
She, she uploaded the budget into the system, so I will...
She uploaded the annual budget, so every, every month, you got to prorate how much budget you got compared to what your actual is.
Sage is supposed to be converting the data, so I have to see why the data is not converting. Sage is corrupt, I'm just going to tell you right now, the system is corrupt.
I thought you bought a different system to avoid Sage.
We haven't had it installed yet.
QuickBooks will not work.
We're keeping Sage, so...
No, we're going to LG.
Local government.
Yeah.
We're going to local government.
So we really don't know where we are financially at?
Well, we, we have records of all the in, but the budget comparison...
Last month, and now it's coming this month?
All of our, all of our income and all of our expenditures, they're all in there, they're good, they're safe, but when it comes to creating the worksheets, it's not corrupt, it's not converting properly. But all of our incomes and all of our expenditures are in there correctly.
So depreciation is in the sewer fund? So it's not on here?
No, depreciation is not in there, that's why I'm saying, it's the, everything we've spent and everything that we've incurred is on there. Depreciation is just something you budget for.
Okay, so this new system we're going to get with the state, are we going to close it every month? Or we're going to do like we do now, and just put whatever in there, and at the end of the year, let the auditor figure it out?
Whenever they bring it to me, and I know what the system is like, I can update you.
Because I mean, if we get an actual versus budget, and the budget's not updated to the month anyway, and the actuals don't include some things, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it's in this month, and it goes away next month.
So Sage is not created for governments, it's just not created for us. Well, they were, that's what they, they were using Peachtree prior to me.
When is, when is local government going to come and let you know, or when are they going to...
I'm going to call them tomorrow.
Upblunt it, or when is...
I'm going to call the auditor tomorrow.
They're aware of the local government software, because they said the same, they suggested also that we move to local government.
We pay, when do we pay for that?
We haven't paid for it.
We budgeted.
For local government? We budgeted for QuickBooks.
QuickBooks, but that's only like five hundred dollars?
Thousand something.
That's going to be that government there too, so...
Didn't we pay for the QuickBooks?
Yes, we have paid for the QuickBooks.
Have we stopped the service plan or whatever that's on it?
Yes, once I found out it was not going to work, I stopped the service plan, yes.
What is the, uh, on the income statement, under revenue, there's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a Charlotte ballpark grant? Who is that? On the income statement, on page two. It's the fourth line from the bottom of revenues.
Or grant, okay. No, it's a ballpark.
It must be Charlotte ballpark.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not anything that's been expended, I'll just have to look in the system to see what's allocated towards there.
It's a Charlotte, that's, oh wait, I don't know, let's go down far enough. Christmas tree, yeah, it does say grant, Charlotte ballpark, hundred and thirty thousand?
Nothing expenditure, it would be something that was entered into the budget.
I'm just, I'm just asking what it is, because it was not in our budget.
Right, I'll look and see what was entered.
I don't have any grant money in there except for, for the park, so that's what I don't understand why. And it was for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I think it was for eighty?
Sixty or eighty.
Are we working on some type of bulk, Charlotte ballpark grant?
This is not anything, I, I don't know.
Nope, not...
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you meant to move this down to this area or not, but I did ask for the financial statements, bank statements to be added to the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay for me to mention that now?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I've already, I thought, I thought we'd already took, I'd already made note of it, to, to add it to the agenda.
Okay. We just didn't, we didn't ever say underneath business, that's why I was asking if it's okay for me to bring it up now. I, I would like to, I would like for the council to receive financial statements and bank statements monthly before each minute, each meeting. If the, uh, if the income statements that we're getting are going to be wrong, I'd rather just see the bank statements myself for each, uh, each account associated with the city. I would like to make that an ordinance, I cannot... Mr. Benjore, I could not make a motion to make that an ordinance today? Okay, so I would like to, I would like for that to be on the next agenda as an ordinance. Gotcha.
Anything else on the finance?
I do, one more question on the finance. TDEC ARPA expense, is that wastewater stuff?
Yes.
Okay, it's in the city of Charlotte?
So, state of Tennessee allocated the funds to the general fund, and I transferred them to, because the last grant we received was from the fire department. So, we had initially filled out the supplier direct form for TDEC ARPA sewer fund. Fire department filled out an application for their grant, so that changed it to the general fund, and it did not get changed back to the TDEC ARPA, because I wasn't aware that you can't have two functioning suppliers, bank accounts at the same time, and they allocated it to the general fund, which I transferred to the sewer fund, and filled out another supplier direct form to transfer it to the sewer fund the next installment. But it's just going to be a process, keeping that on track with the fire department receiving another grant for twenty-nine thousand, so it's just keeping up with the transfers, but they don't notify me when there's a transfer, so I don't know when the monies are coming in.
Okay, so that would go into our bank account?
Yeah, it is ACH'd.
But this is under expense?
Yeah, because I wrote a check to the sewer fund.
Okay.
So I expensed it, it was income, it came in ACH, it's recorded as a income, and then it was expensed to the sewer department.
Anything else? Next committee wastewater board.
I have a question. Is that a public meeting? The wastewater a public meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there an agenda posted somewhere else? So they answered that?
Yeah, all right.
So we don't have to post that as a meeting, like we do city council and...
It's best, or it should, it should be posted, or it should be advertised, because it is, it's a, it's a meeting.
Do we need to change that, because I like city of Charlotte to come.
Okay, we just have to get Chad...
Do it at the end of the month and send it out there?
Uh, next one, streets and bridges.
Nothing due to report.
Only, home streets, I guess is where I bring this up, on our Sidewinder, we got to do that Tennessee tool right now. Nothing's been started on it, and they're still sitting in the parking lot outside, through the ice and snow and all that, right? Is this something that they haven't touched it, do I need to go pick this up, get three bids on repairing the Sidewinder arm? Sidewinder boom?
Well, it costs less than a thousand dollars to repair.
I doubt it.
Then we need to advertise it.
I don't, I don't know anything, you work on a tractor, it gonna cost under a thousand dollars.
That's true.
I would say so.
So we have to replace this well and shop them dicks in the vanilla woodwork?
I don't think any of them would bid.
That's what I'm saying, they won't bid them.
I don't know, I mean...
I think we need to raise that up, so we got to deal with this. Because I don't think if you put that out for bid, you'd have anybody call.
So I need to get the tractor before they start working on this, so...
We can still go ahead and let bids.
But that'd be a charter change, so let, that'd be something that...
Well, I mean, back when that was probably put in, a thousand dollars was a lot of money.
Yeah, probably right.
Can we not make it to where we can vote? Mr. Benjore?
Again, I'm going to tell you what your charter says.
Well, I know, you know, in the past, if we, if it was less than a thousand, we, we didn't vote on it, but if it was, we just voted on it and hear, and decided who we went with. I mean, even if you get bids, you don't have to accept those bids.
Right, right. But, the other thing I was going by was what the auditor, you know, she brought that to our attention, that, you know, she, she come back on Chad, because we had done, what, six or seven things?
You know, a couple of emergency repairs.
Yeah, some repairs where we didn't...
Single sores, I think.
And she's just not, y'all got to have...
I mean, even if we got the bid, we still had to vote on which one that we take.
Yeah.
So if he goes and get a estimate, and we vote on it, I mean, there's no difference, right?
Has to be advertised.
Yeah, that's the difference.
She suggested twenty-five, fifty thousand to be the new cap.
That's, that's the difference.
She said that's standard practice.
And that's what we did with the place, the replacement of the sewer pots, we just kind of reached out to some people we knew who were contractors, to give us bids, but that's where we went wrong, we were supposed to advertise.
Well, I can understand like works like that, fixing a...
But fixing or repairing? I, I argue...
Your bids are shorter, and, and, yeah, I mean, because the tractor could be down until the, uh...
Exactly.
Until the bids are in, and then you got to vote on it to see which one gets it.
I agree. I agree.
Add it to the, I mean, add it to the other charter discussion?
Do we want to motion that out for bid to go ahead and try to get some votes? Grass is going to...
I mean, nobody's going to answer those quotes.
They ain't going to bid it anywhere.
I don't, I mean...
I mean, you need to advertise it.
Michael Daxson, yeah, I got his card at the office.
I mean...
But it still has to be...
You could still advertise it to cover the legal side of the city government.
You'd normally send it out to folks that might get on it.
Yeah, you could solicit bids.
I was just going to say...
But if it's under a thousand dollars, you got to get a bid, right?
Right.
Michael might be able to bid it. Worth a shot, get him to come in and look at it.
He would probably be cheaper, honestly. He quoted, he quoted the railing next to Cafe Gilli after y'all, this council had already accepted the other bid for like two hundred dollars.
Anything else? Uh, next one is public safety.
Oh wait, did we do street lights and signs?
No, we didn't, we did streets, didn't we? Street lights and signs.
Because I always bring up that city of Charlotte, come in...
Yeah.
That sign looks horrible at the bridge.
That's just, I don't know when that'll get, when it, when it'll be finished or done.
Has it been requested?
If you request...
Is it state sign, or is that our, that our sign or your flag?
It says city of Charlotte, Charlotte, or Charlotte city limits.
Two posts?
It's two posts, I'm sure.
It could be, but it says Charlotte city limits.
Right.
They green sign, we can order another one.
Yeah, I can just get Charlotte as soon as one get it put up.
It just looks horrible.
But it may be a state sign.
The last one we swapped, they didn't like it and took it down, so we'll see if they like our new one or not.
Yeah.
There's a mile marker sign there too, that was horrible, but I know that is state. But Charlotte city limits, I mean, our sign should look...
Is it at Sulfur Fort, because I guess, I can email Tony.
Right there, just past the barn, or at the barn.
And to speak of streets and, or, well, we've already, well, streets, I talked to Dan Eubank, and he said it would be around spring break when they started paving. But they wanted to get his culvert in first, so if it's done by then, then he'll start paving.
You have...
March.
March, in two weeks.
Second week is March, third.
He's waiting on you to do that culvert?
Just one. He didn't have a chance to look at the lights. Where's the, where's the eye for the, is it over on the west side?
Which one?
For the decorative lights around the square?
Yeah, it's on the west side, on the telephone pole, the breaker box eyes on the bottom of it.
Is it in the courtyards, is it on the, in the courtyard?
Yeah, it's in the courtyard.
On that pole?
Yep.
Well, I thought, is there two of them, two?
I think there's only one in the center, and then there's one down here, and one on Humphrey, there might be one more.
Okay. All right, now moving on to public safety. Fire hall? Fire hall, hasn't been any other discussion with the engineer? I'm waiting on, uh, I don't even know if they've done the soil sample test that they have to do.
Is this at the Lions Club?
And, yeah, well, no, no, the new location.
They have it?
Oh.
He ain't said anything to me about the control panel being done.
Is he still paying him monthly or how's that?
What's that?
How's he still getting paid by the city?
Uh, he just gets paid by the job.
He was paid for the renderings.
Yeah.
Anything else would be.
And that's it.
And everything else would be more.
What about any, have we started working on any of the grants? For the fire hall?
Not that.
You would need actual plans.
We, we have to have, we have to have the plans and the approval of the plans before we can even.
Before we can work on grants?
Yeah. That's gonna be required.
So, I mean, we're just at the mercy of Mr. White.
Is the council wanting him to finish the plans? That would be an extra cost.
I haven't seen him in five months.
I mean, are we, can we actually afford a three to five million dollar fire hall?
No, 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 I would be looking at a three to five million dollar.
Because that building is gonna cost, I mean, he says the one in Ashen City costs five.
Yeah.
I mean, it's maybe a little smaller, but I, I think it'd be between three and five.
Well, the, 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 the big thing, the big difference in the one in Ashen City and the one we're wanting to build is the one in Ashen City, the outside is show out, like, the out, the facade outside looks really good, this would be more.
I don't know, it, it, it's kinda, it's all brick, I mean, it's not.
Well, if it costs three million today or this year, what's it gonna cost next year? And what's it gonna cost a year after? It's just gonna, it ain't gonna go down.
Correct.
And.
It's a Taj Mahal fire hall that, again, I don't know if we want, I asked this when he was here, if we want to get a smaller fire hall, something that we can afford.
I mean, yeah, I mean, right now, I mean, I don't think we'll have a full-time fire, fires for what? Another five to ten years?
Maybe.
I mean, we could build a whole lot cheaper one. And then plus it's on Smith Street, so it's not gonna be seen by a lot of people.
And that's, that's gonna be another big downfall. Is where that location, outside, out of mind. And that hurts us as far as volunteers, you know?
Yeah.
People come down and volunteer because you've got a nice place, I mean.
Okay, so.
And I've got a big write-up down at our fire hall about that, about addressing cities on why you need a decent-looking fire hall and a nicer building and somewhere that's storm safe and you want to make it homey for your volunteers to come down and spend time there instead of being at home all the time.
I think a storm shelter addition would be welcome for Charlotte, especially as active as we are with major storms.
Yeah, because I would stay in at ten K M in the storm. Don't you have?
It'd be great for a community shelter, which should also be interned, allocated with the grants.
Which also, Jack's right to, I mean, which is something we need, I mean, it, it, it's definitely something we need, so, I mean, it's a shelter.
Mm-hmm, a lot of homes without basements.
So, where are we at with this, I guess?
I guess it'll still make.
So, what do we want to do? What do we do, what do we want to? We haven't, I mean, I think he was here.
He was here in?
It's two months ago.
November?
November?
He was in November or December.
No, we didn't have any.
That's right, we didn't, so it was November.
I think it was November, because he wasn't here last month.
And he met with you at the Lions Club?
Yeah.
So, I just don't mean, we're doing nothing. So, I just don't know what is, if we want to look at cheaper options, how do we do that? If we want to make it smaller, something that we can afford?
You have to have a whole process of all of them. I think we have to have engineered plans, we have to.
Sure.
Yeah.
But right now, we don't have any.
How much did he pay?
Yeah, there's plans, the plans he had was almost complete.
Eighty-six hundred or something, something like.
And that.
For the renderings.
Oh, yeah.
And he could do new renderings with a different dimension, but it would not be plans. He would have to go forward with the engineering and stuff like that.
Well, I want to say this, if you're gonna spend the money to build something, you don't want to spend the money in five or ten years to have to add on to it because it's gonna be twice as much as what the rest will be able to cost. And we've already been through that in Dixon. And that was within a six-month timeframe.
So, we need to know what grants we can get? I think we asked for this last night he was here. We have no clue what even type of grant we can get right now.
Well, I, I mean, he also said that Ashen City didn't give him grants.
So.
They didn't give any.
They did get grants.
USDA low-interest loan and grants.
Yeah. I'll just get with him. Try to get with him and, uh, it may be a day or two.
Yeah, we need, we need an update for this. Much like everything else on this list, we're just.
Well, it's, it's like the, the next one, the parks and recreation, which we submitted to him, what, a month ago? Two months ago to get the civil engineer to give us the, uh.
Proposed elevations?
Yeah, the elevations out here so that we could get a, an idea of what it's gonna cost to get the grade work done down from here down to the spring. And the word I got today was they're at least two weeks away from that. Well, the grants, the grant expires June thirtieth for the park.
Why do we have to go through him? Why can't we call like Michael Wayne that's got civil engineers that work for him? And they, you know, they'd be the ones that would do the work.
Yeah.
People like that, and you're cutting out the middleman.
I don't know if that's a, something that you'd, would you have to get bids? You'd have to get bids for that. But, I don't know that, you know, surely they wouldn't charge you anything for the bids.
No.
Uh, but I'm, I'm at the point now to where, of course, there can't be, there won't be any playground equipment because we didn't get that grant. So, if we were gonna do anything, just a path from here down to the spring is basically all I'm down to.
Is the eighty thousand dollar grant we have, is that the one that cannot be used for dirtwork?
Uh, right.
So, it can be used for equipment, I guess?
Con, yeah, equip con, concreting, anything like that, uh, it can be used for railing, uh, where railings are required, you know, to make it ADA accessible.
None of that can be done without that part, basically.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Welcome back to the public safety. We, everybody knows we got the grant last year and we bought six new air packs. They have changed our bottles from a twenty-two hundred and sixteen PSI bottle to a forty-five hundred PSI bottle. The twenty-two sixteens are going obsolete, they're gonna quit naked, so. The bottles we have in our ambulance are forty-five hundred PSI, that's what we use to fill the small bottle with. We're gonna have to replace those with six thousand PSI bottles to fill up the fifty-five hundred PSI bottle. I know it's a bunch of mumbo jumbo, but sure, we're gonna have to buy three new bottles to go in the back of the ambulance to refill our air packs so we don't have to go to Dixon every time we need to fill a small bottle. Um, I'm assuming I need to get, we, we gotta put that out for bid because they're about, oh, just under eleven hundred dollars a piece. So. And it's in our budget, Kenny said it was in our budget for the part of the equipment or something like that, so. We need to be looking at that. I, I did get a price of a thousand twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per bottle and that didn't include shipping and if we ordered it on their regular freight day, we'd have to ship it.
And this is se, Mr. Yates, this is separate from the grant?
Yeah, this is separate from the grant.
Okay.
That ain't long to go. And he's trying to find us some like refurbished bottles or used bottles or something like that that are supposed to be breathing air bottles?
Yeah.
He's trying to find us some used ones that we could get even cheaper, but no luck so far.
Well, though he's, Kenny's not here tonight and I don't know, uh, you're, you're probably aware that, uh, he has resigned and is stepping down as the fire chief, so.
Was not aware.
Didn't know that.
Well, I mean, I just, I thought there's some things that's been going on in his life, like, pre, uh, I guess kidney stones, so he's not, uh, he's just not able to be here tonight. He had, was gonna be here to, to announce to you guys. He's already announced to, I think, the fireman, uh, the fire department that, that he is stepping down and resigning as fire chief. Uh, just because there's, just some things that, uh, that he don't want to miss out with a, a daughter. He just, he wants to be there for her whenever he can and I don't blame him.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move on, you got anything else?
I think, I think.
Are you, are you gonna get the bids and?
So, we're gonna put it out for bid?
Yeah, we have to put them out for bid.
Advertise them.
Uh, beautification.
I need the specs.
Says something about walking track, didn't you?
Well, that'd be on the, be on the next.
It ain't on the, you know.
On the agenda for.
Committee?
You're right.
It's a committee report, we can talk about it.
That would probably be more like parks and recreation, but.
Well, talk about it. We don't have to make a motion.
Well, we just seen the, you know, when we come down to the, the five thousand dollar, let y'all vote it on for to fix the walking track, people out here that all the time.
Yeah, we was gonna, uh, but they had to take the trees out, that was the stipulation. If they weren't gonna take the trees out, there wasn't no sense of fixing the walking track.
We paid five thousand dollars.
No, we didn't.
We, uh, we approved the money to do it, but we, they were gonna have to take care of the trees and the roots that's tearing up the walking track.
Five thousand dollars.
That would be, that's before us, that's before us.
Yeah.
Twenty? It was in like, it was the last, our last meeting a few years ago. Yeah, it was in, it was when me and Melvin was on it last time.
They had to remove the trees and then.
It was like two thousand twenty would have been the last year we was on it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it?
It was nineteen.
Or twenty-two, twenty-one or twenty-two. Yeah, it was twenty-two. It was our last.
So, what have we?
But they still ain't fixed the trees. It's my, my mom's husband asked me about it the other day and I said, until they move the trees.
They just.
Because all, that's where it's broke up, right around those.
Where the roots are, yeah.
Yeah, right at the, the baseball field, the little.
And I guess all they've done is trim.
They trimmed them, but they, they were debating whether to take them out or not.
Wait, but Caleb was sitting next to me, wasn't it a check? I saw the actual check.
Did you? I didn't see that. She said it was for a curb.
That was for Martin, remember? You, you had left. I brought it down the phone, it was for repair of a curb on Martin Street.
Okay, okay.
That Bobby Spade had done with, um, a Bryant guy.
So, where were you headed with it?
I was just hearing all the time, they don't walk down there because they're tripping falling out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've been asked a bunch of times.
Yeah, I'm right there editing everybody's.
We're, we're the same way.
We're gonna let the ball go or we're gonna?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, there, it's the Bradford Parkers behind the little baseball field, it's one that we had an issue with.
The nine and ten building?
Yeah.
Stevie, I thought at that time that somebody down there said they wasn't taking out the trees.
All right, that's why they didn't get the money, I don't think.
Said they weren't gonna foot with them, so.
I don't think, I think we approved it, but we made the stipulation they had to take the trees out, what, uh, you remember that gym? I don't remember it.
We didn't even talk about taking them any except.
Because you was, yeah, we were gonna, we talked about taking the roots out and, and then, I don't know what ever happened. I don't think they, I think they decided not to take it out.
They didn't want them.
They, yeah.
Because I mean, if you paved it again, it's gonna do the same thing in years.
Yep.
And it's private property, the city can't have that.
The cat, I mean, the little league owns it. The only other option would be to go around and go out further.
Yeah, then.
I mean, people aren't allowed to park over there anymore, I guess.
Yeah.
Like the, behind the.
Behind the trees.
Oh, they have to go.
You pull right up.
You have to go all the way around.
Go all the way around.
Yeah.
I mean, that's another option, they could go just right on the outside of the walking track and curve it around and it would be fine. Get away from those roots.
Yeah.
Because it's just like, I think it's six trees, I think's what it is.
It's on both sides. There's the, on when you first come in, there's these here and then there's some in the back.
But didn't they cut them all off the girls' field?
I don't know, I hadn't been up there.
I hadn't been up there in a while.
Yeah, yeah, they, they.
They cut them all off that side.
Ain't no, right.
Yeah.
Because it was, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think they removed them.
All right, let's move on, uh, now beautification. I'll, I'll probably wait till a little more into springtime to, to address, but of course, you know, we do have the landscaper that will, will start whenever the, uh, weather breaks. But he, he already started doing some, some things. Look into that a little bit more, maybe next month or the next, in April. Planning and zoning.
We had one subdivision, it was a piece of property up on forty-eight, I think it was Finney's. They built on two parts, it was on part of two different lots. And so, they just carved that piece out to subdivide that piece out of the double lot that they had because then it, actually it's up for sale, I saw it today, when I drove by, it's up for sale.
So, they own, they own?
They own everything, it's just their house was in between two separate lots and so they carved that piece out, so they still own the land, but they're trying to sell it. I believe they own all of it, but they're gonna try to sell it out some of the day apparently. That's only been happening.
Okay. Nothing on construction? I started to mention this, uh, under public safety, ambulance service. We've got some sheet rock issues up there that's got to be repaired. Uh, that's according to, uh, went according to the utility partner insurance. Where we had some water damage, uh, we didn't, or we just hadn't addressed it. And, uh, but until they inspected, uh, the buildings, um, that they're, they're saying that we've gotta, we've gotta put sheet, they didn't say we had to finish it.
I was wondering if we just take it all down?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because they're worried about falling and hitting someone in the head.
Yeah.
Take it down and can't fall.
I don't know. I guess we could, we could get in touch and ask if that's a possibility.
I mean, it's cosmetic, correct?
Yeah.
Then, yeah, you can take it down.
We have a time limit, did they give you a timeframe when they're moving out?
Hmm, no, he didn't even, um, what day? Yesterday? Did I talk to him?
Yeah, it was yesterday, I think.
Yeah, I talked to him yesterday and he, they still didn't have a, a time limit on when they're gonna move out. Anyway, since, and I guess, uh, what, uh, address you, Shannon, since you're here, if there are any, I don't remember if this was in the fire department or the ambulance service, if we've got any switches or plugs, outlets that do not have covers on them?
I think we fixed all that.
Okay, and.
Few years ago with their go-around, so.
Oh, they took a picture of.
The switch was at the.
Your smoke detectors?
Ambulance, the smoke detector was down there.
Yeah, the smoke detector needed to be replaced down the fire hall.
Yeah.
Good place for it.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Good place for it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, only other thing is I guess there's a planning and zoning scheduled meeting, March the sixth. There's nothing, nothing.
They were gonna come back and they didn't submit, so.
Okay, all right, so there will, will, there will be no planning and zoning meeting? Wastewater meeting scheduled for March the eleventh. I need to get, I guess we need to get that advertised.